Good evening, everyone. I now call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM, and we're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I do just want to give a little bit of a heads up that tonight's meeting is going to look a little bit red because we do have some administrative duties we need to take care of beforehand. So tonight's agenda is Warren's bills, agenda meeting, and then we are going to be tabling the administrative weekly update, liaison updates, department head and community chair updates, old business, and we'll go into new business to take care of those administrative tasks, and then we will open up the public hearing, just so that you folks have an idea of what tonight's agenda is going to be. So Warren and Bill's have those all been signed?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda, second?
All in favor? Minutes of last week's meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minute meetings from July 23rd, second?
All in favor? With that, we are moving past administrative update, liaison, department heads, and old business, and go straight into new business and beginning with a freedom of information request.
Okay, this came in on 7/28 from Rollin Waterhouse. Request list of town of active employees excluding school and fire department by name, position, salary, or pay rate per hour, employment status full or part-time. We will work on getting that done.
Thank you. And next we move on to signing of the referendum order and review of the draft warrants.
Okay. So you should have both of those documents in front of you. Really, the only change since we last spoke about this is regarding Article Four. It was Warren's original request that this come from a raise and appropriate because it's something that you're going to raise and appropriate every year. When I sent all of my numbers over to Mark Roy to review them and make sure we had done them as properly, he made a good point that essentially, we commit taxes in August each year for an October tax bill. So when you commit taxes, you have to be able to enter in your municipal appropriations, your school appropriations. You have to have all those numbers in place to figure out what the tax rate is going to be. So how are you going to know if the September 30th vote to raise and appropriate this money passes? If it does pass, after you commit taxes, you actually have to do a supplement to tax bill to all of the property owners. So it's his recommendation that the wording be changed to authorize the expenditure from the unassigned fund balance. And a word is missing from there. Shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $65,938? We're going to insert the words "from the unassigned fund balance" to fulfill the 25-26 winter snow plowing contracts. And this number wasn't in there last time. It's based on the approved per mile times the actual miles less what was appropriated in April.
Do I hear a motion? Or any discussion, I guess, before we go?
I'm going to go add those words that you guys can sign up tonight if that's your wish.
Do we have to take a motion?
On Article Four, question four?
I'm adding that language.
I will make a motion to add the language that the town administrator just added to that. Second?
All in favor?
The other thing, he did add the words "up to" on each one of them. So if you look at questions, maybe Danny, you want to just go through and read them and make sure they're exact, and I'll go fix that one?
Hello?
Yeah.
On question one, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $656,000 from the unassigned fund balance to purchase a new ambulance? Question two, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $22,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a command vehicle for the fire department? Question three, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $34,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a municipal vehicle to be used by the municipal and code enforcement staff? And question four, with the amendment, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $65,938,000 from the unassigned fund balance to fulfill the 2025-2026 winter snow plowing contracts? District One, North Snow Plowing, District Two, South Snow Plowing, I think we already have a motion. We voted, we should be good. With that being said, I now, we are now going to move into at 6:07 our public hearing. So just for view, the order of discussion is going to be the purchase of a new ambulance. Number two will be the command vehicle for the fire department. Number three will be the discussion of the municipal vehicle. And number four shall be the snow contract. I'm really excited and happy to see this turnout, but I do just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear everybody share their concerns or questions, that we just go over some guidelines. You were fortunate to make it tonight, but we know there's plenty of people who are going to be watching this video from home. And so we do ask that they can hear the questions being asked. But if you do have a question, that you come up to this podium so that you can catch it on camera and your question will be heard for not only you, but anyone else at home who may watch this video later on. We also ask that if you have multiple questions for a specific question, that you ask your first question and then step aside, let others come up and ask questions. And then once people have gone through that, if you have more questions, then you come back down. I want to make sure that everybody here has the opportunity to ask their questions and have their voices to be heard. With that being said, we will start with question one.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion to sign this?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone have any? So question one, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $656,000 from the unassigned fund balance to purchase a new ambulance? Are there any questions or?
This is the chair. Are we voting on this before the public hearing?
Well, you had to vote on the order and sign it.
Yes.
You're not making your recommendations until afterward. Did you do that while you stepped out?
We're already in the, in the.
Public hearing. I thought that's when we voted for the, that was for the amendment, okay. So no, we're not.
Okay. You've got to have a signed order in place.
We will do that. So do I, do we leave the public hearing?
I mean, for legal purposes, we posted the public hearing. Coming in and out is not going to make a difference. So, but let's just make sure I have this question right. So now it says, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $65,938 from the unassigned fund balance to fulfill the 25-26 winter plowing contract?
Okay. So that has been amended. Do I hear a motion to sign the order?
I make a motion, we sign the order for the four questions presented, second?
All in favor? Okay. Sorry about that. Do we have the order to sign? Okay, so now we will begin with question one, shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $656,000 from the unassigned fund balance to purchase a new ambulance? Are there any?
I had one question forwarded to me from the town administrator from the Work Finance Committee about how many times we specifically had a mutually ambulance in town? I can't draw down that specifically through our reporting software, but what I can produce, the same numbers that you did before when discussing this. So four years and nine months because our software system changed. Overlapping calls, well, 425. Of those 425 calls, 176 of them were EMS calls where I could not send an ambulance because we were already on another call prior to that. So this second ambulance will allow us to better serve the community and be able to respond to those calls and not rely on so much of the mutual aid. The last couple of years, I've been able to produce, I've been able to have a dedicated team that comes out even on those back-to-back calls. So I've been able to do that, to staff that second truck even though it's not staffed with a duty crew in the station, often the personnel committees can pick that truck up and respond to the call.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Just make sure you understood that. I think the question was, how many times did, in the town of Acton, was there a need for two ambulances at the same time? I thought you, it sounded like you were talking about how many times did we send?
No, no, sorry. That, those are calls in our community. So four, 425 overlapping calls, 176 of them are EMS calls. So the ambulance is already on a call.
And there's a call within Acton for another ambulance?
For another ambulance, correct. 176, that's obviously over four years worth of data that you can produce. Whether that's a lot, not enough, I don't know. I can't obviously determine medical.
Even at the end of the day?
Excuse me, three people talking? It goes out over the airways and people at home can't hear. I'm sorry.
The, the new purchase of the ambulance sort of just happened twice because you're talking about the longevity of yours is shortening, correct?
Correct. Longevity of, of the one we currently have to get more years out of it. And also, just in this month, cumulatively, with repairs going on to the ambulance we currently have, it's been out approximately a week. So that's a week that we haven't had an ambulance because it's a shop getting repaired, with repairs done. We had one shop do repairs and then went to go get an alignment and they found some more repairs they needed that the other shop didn't pick up on. So it's in the, it's in the process.
One thing I did notice yesterday, it was an odd, you know, here we have the public hearing tonight, I'm driving on 111, and I see a ramp truck with a standish ambulance on the back of it going down the road. So that was, it made me think a little bit.
Those things do happen unexpectedly.
And while your ambulance was out, we had to rely on another town to cover us.
Correct.
And if that other town had a call, they wouldn't have been able to cover us.
Correct. We'd be calling a further away town. So yes. Either way, the mutual aid, people will come help us just like we help everybody else. But when other resources are depleted, that just means our resources are going even further away from our town to get to our town.
Anyone else have anything? Any questions or anything to say in regards to question one, the purchase of a new ambulance?
Joyce Backshe, Warren Finance, West Shore Drive. Just probably north of the chief, one of your gentlemen. And so the public knows. Ordering, I know ordering a fire truck cost takes forever, three years or so. Do we have a timeline? If this is ordered, when will we get our new ambulance?
Good question. When we received the bids from the two companies that did, we selected one. It was estimated thirty, three years, thirty to thirty-six months. So two and a half to three years. That's from the day we ordered it.
May I follow up?
Yeah, I don't see anybody else.
My follow-up would be, and just a matter of information, our truck, the truck we have now, the ambulance, seems to have its own issues. And this doesn't look like we'd be having a second ambulance because ours would be going to the end of its lifetime, perhaps. So just as a point of interest, we're being proactive, I believe. That is my opinion. And to Tom's question about, my husband and I actually happened, we got a call from Lifeline. We were an elderly couple from Acton. We were there, call, the call person, Lifeline called us. They had been in an accident. The lady of the house held out, bleeding profusely, as a lot of us older people probably do. Her husband went to help her, and he fell out. And two ambulances were needed. And we had, our Acton ambulance came to the site, and they had to get Sanford, actually. That was the closest one they could get. They have it on West Shore Drive. A couple, I'm sure a lot from the news. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for question one, the purchase of a new ambulance, before we move on?
I did receive one email. They had a couple of questions in it regarding the insurance and what those costs would look like. So for me, municipal, the 2025 Ford ambulance, based on the agreed value, would add a yearly premium of $2,650. And adding an ambulance to the malpractice suit would be $1,875.
Any other discussion on question one?
The lifespan of the ambulance is four and a half years, right? Or did I hear that correctly?
So the expected rest of this life? Or lifespan is over ten, fifteen years, right?
What's the question?
Will I stand up?
So our current truck is a 2017 with eighty-ish thousand miles on it. I would like to get fifteen to twenty out of it is my goal, right? The truck is not catastrophically built. The stuff that it's out for repair right now is just general maintenance stuff, ball joints, lime, and tires, just general stuff. Nothing catastrophic. So by getting this other truck, we'll extend the life of this truck because we'll take the primary use off of that truck and be for backup calls or if the main, the frontline truck, the new truck is out of service for maintenance or changes whatever.
So the lifespan, or you're saying, this ambulance that we currently have still has another, what, ten?
I'd like to get another ten years out of it easily, yes. That's, that's my goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on question one, the purchase of a new ambulance? Seeing none, we will move to question two. Shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $22,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a command vehicle for the fire department? Anyone have?
The only question I got was also regarding insurance. 2015 Chevy Tahoe would add $476 to the premium.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we, we've had, Phil Caruso, Acton resident, emergency management agency director. We, we've had similar, well, to this conversation when we talked about interoperability. And, and so that's kind of what I'm going to talk about here real quick. Obviously, you gentlemen understand that we wouldn't have this question on a referendum. So I'm really addressing the folks that have to approve this in September. And you probably know everything I'm going to say, but I want it to be on record. First of all, my vested interest, the only one I have is, and I'm talking as an emergency management director besides, obviously, a resident, is that our town is, has everything it possibly can with the resources we have to make sure public safety can do what it was meant to do. And we don't have a police force, so obviously, that means the fire department and myself doing what I can to augment that. We had a discussion in April, myself and the select board, talking about interoperability, which Wayne's description with the ambulance touched on as well. And why that's critical is, back in, nine eleven happened, and this has always been a problem because I've been in public safety in various ways. Meaning that you get, you think, if you get a disaster, a bunch of agencies show up and no one can talk to each other. People get killed, people get hurt, things don't get done. It's an obvious problem. In, in our case, because we're on the border of New Hampshire, and mutual aid is everything because all the towns around here, including those towns, Oscepee, all the way down to Rochester, and, and all the towns on this side of the border, we lie heavily on each other for mutual aid, which, which obviously works well. The problem is, from a communication standpoint, that we use UHF frequencies in Maine, and New Hampshire uses VHF frequencies. And so what's been going on all this time here at Acton, and I'm guessing in other towns, is, and we've changed this luckily, is that our, our folks have to carry two different portable radios because mutual aid from New Hampshire is, is probably about sixty percent of the time. That, that, that's a communications problem, which we put, we started to solve by starting to purchase the dual-band radios as we phased out the old ones so that one radio is not portable, I'm talking, is doing the job of having two when you're in for a hundred dollar difference in cost, plus a lot more expandable for the future. So how, how does, what does that have to do with this vehicle? I have to get to that. This, this vehicle is not, can't be thought of as like it's a perk for the fire chief or anything. It's actually, when I look at resources that the town needs or can have, those radios, because of what they do with interoperability, we have the same issue with this. We have great opportunity because not only, this is an instant command vehicle. That's what it's for. Right now, things are being done from the tailgate of a pickup truck, which, which we can alleviate for $22,000, in my opinion. In the future, we don't have to keep buying new trucks. We can find ways to do this every five or seven years or wherever it works. But in the, in the immediate thing, this, this is a great opportunity. The vehicle, just what's in the vehicle, and I'll get to the interoperability side, would cost a lot more than what we're paying for the entire truck. And I'm talking about to outfit it with communication gear and everything. It actually costs a lot more than $22,000. I think the truck has about 100,000 miles now, and it's been maintained. Are we allowed to say where it would come from?
Yeah.
So it's been maintained and owned by the same fire department. They've offered it to us at this price, and I think it's critical that we do this. You're not going to get opportunities like this. The, the, back to interoperability, like the portables, this has a dual-band repeater, a cross, a cross-band repeater, which we just had an 11-acre fire on the ridge a month or so ago. And luckily, Sanford showed up with a vehicle with this cross-band repeater because obviously, there were agencies from New Hampshire. What that does is, you, the repeater will take in both UHF and VHF frequencies in New Hampshire and us, and, and, and be able to retransmit those simultaneously so that everybody's talking to each other. To me, that, that makes this a no-brainer. I think we need to make sure in September, when this, this particular item, it's the only thing I'm going to speak to, that we do approve this because it's an excellent opportunity from my EMA standpoint to add a resource that's critical to, to help the town itself. Any questions? Gentlemen?
Yes. Is the command vehicle the only way to solve this interoperability issue? Can handheld devices solve this?
Well, this, this command vehicle is more than just a repeater part.
No, but, and I said, we're hearing a lot about.
You, you could, you could tell around the portable, I don't know how realistic that is, but you could have a mobile dual-band.
Perhaps Chief, Chief Hampton.
So not, not ideally, no. Because the, you, you could outfit that, one of those cross-band repeaters in every truck, but I'm just loosely guesstimating that's probably a $5,000-plus purchase. I don't know what vehicle's going to be there because each vehicle gets used for different types of calls. This vehicle would be able to go to all the calls just with the duty crew taking certain call, certain apparatus. So it could certainly be done, but we'd have to do it seven times, six times if we had any difficulty having that to make it work.
Thank you. Someone else have a question?
You have to stay right there for 20 minutes. You sure you're right? Last week at the meeting, we were talking about bringing this car to, maybe an auto mechanic can look it over? Could you have it get done?
No, they were talking about the sheriff's car, the current sheriff's car that Chaplin wanted to purchase.
Okay, well, because on this particular car, the 2016 Chevy Tahoe, there's been six recalls. Has this been looked at? Is something, you know, serious?
Not from us, it hasn't.
I just, I'm just wondering if somebody has a record of that.
I'm, I'm sure we could get the maintenance records from the new Stanford if we ask them.
Because I think that would be a good idea to take a look because it's 100,000 miles with a history of recalls. It may not be that good a deal. The radio, which is maybe the rest of the vehicle.
Let me, I'll.
Can we take that action, Jennifer?
Would you like to take that?
Yeah.
I would like to. Let's check the maintenance out, and I would contact Sanford and see if they have any records on it.
Lee Robitour, resident and Warren Finance committee member. Have you put together a budget for the overall cost of maintaining and running this vehicle? Or any of the vehicles that have been recommended for voting? The cost of acquisition is one thing. We heard about the insurance, but I think it's important for people to have some understanding of what the ongoing cost will be based upon items, you know, the gas, registrations, maintenance, the rest of it.
Yeah, so we've put something together for the municipal vehicle because the municipal vehicle, we track miles currently for our code.
One article at a time, yeah.
So I've done it for that. Why I haven't done it for the fire department is because he doesn't put in mileage for any personal use now, so I don't have anything to base it off of. But he may be able to answer that question.
You should be able to put together an idea of what the cost to the town's going to be to maintain this vehicle on an ongoing basis and what the impact to the budget and your, your needs are going to be going forward.
That's certainly information we can get.
I'm in favor of this, by the way. I just think it's important to have, there's no need.
Well, Lee, I'm sure he's going to maintain it and operate it just like he would any other fire.
I, I don't doubt that, Dave. I think the cost of the vehicle is one thing. The annual maintenance and the cost of running the vehicle is another thing. And that's, that's, it's proposed, it's, it's just an estimate, I understand that, but I think to understand the impact to the taxpayer, you need also get an idea of what the cost of running that vehicle is. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yip Ho, I'm a little boxer's rid. I just want to say, for everybody that's listening to this on TV, if you can backtrack and listen to what, what was said earlier, all these are good questions. But I'm a volunteer down at the York County, and we just got through putting together a truck for communication, and the stuff that's on that truck is going to cost more than the truck. So that is one heck of a good deal. And yeah, we got to maintain it, but I, and I don't know what that's going to cost, but I just want to say, don't pass this up. Because then you end up, you end up paying more.
Joyce Backshe, more in finance. The, one of the things that, on information we've got is the maintenance on that car, it's under equal. It, it's a Chevy Tahoe that's a little bigger than the car. It's undercoated every year to prevent rust, which, that's great. I, I take my car and give it to the mechanic and hope it's good. But the things that are in that, besides a radio, are, are essentials that you need for incidents. And that might be a full, a complete first aid kit, an AED box could be there. I'm not sure if there's one in there, but it does have all the equipment that you need for incidents as well as the radios. First aid, warning lights. But the, it kind of says it all. Everything you need for an incident. If you want the first person to arrive at that scene, you're not standing there with your hands in your pocket. You have first aid, you have equipment that can maybe break a window, that you can get the person out of the car safely. So the, the equipment, according to the information we have, if we were to, to go out and buy it and have it put in the car, would be thirty thousand dollars, brand-new. That's information from the fire department that I'm giving you. So I think it's a fabulous buy and I'm in favor of it. I'm speaking to it. Thank you.
Before you come up, anybody else have any?
Leslie Berlin. Just as a, a, a point of reference, I mean, we're, we're talking about twenty-two thousand dollars for an old vehicle. And when that, that vehicle lifespan is found over, to replace that vehicle, because once we have a command vehicle, we're going to always have a command vehicle. We're looking at probably north of a hundred thousand dollars to replace that vehicle. So my, and, and my other, my question is, where will that vehicle be? We have a part-time chief, so is the vehicle going to be staying at the fire station? Or where, where will that be stored?
So the board hasn't set a creative natural policy yet. We have been meeting with department heads regarding these municipal vehicles and have started deliberations and talks about, you know, usage logs and driver's record checks and how that would look. So the final decisions haven't been made yet, but we can assure you that the town's policy is going to insist that it's, you know, only for town-related business, so.
So, I'm sorry, what does that mean, town-related?
Well, I mean, if, you know, if, if the fire chief, for example, has a shift in City of Sanford, he's not going to take that vehicle to work in the City of Sanford if he's scheduled to work that day. He is scheduled and acting, then the vehicle's going to be with him.
Will it be stored here or at home?
So those are conversations that, that he wants to have with you more as it gets closer in regards to his shift and what that looks like. But he has, he has recognized the biggest piece of that, which is that he's not going to take it to his regular job out of town.
Lee, Lee has good points. Any vehicle the town buys that's on that list is going to have the same concerns maintaining them. Leslie's concerned, first of all, the town should have had one of these a long time ago, like most towns do. It's not, it's not just a vehicle with a radio in it. I suggest everybody go online and look what it, what a command, incident command vehicle actually was for. We should have always had one, in my opinion, and for twenty-two grand. I realize it's got a hundred thousand miles on it, but we can find the maintenance records very easily. First of all, to re, to replace it, of course, once you get one, you should have one because we always should have. But that doesn't mean you have to go out and buy a hundred thousand dollar vehicle, which is what we're not doing now. That can be repeated very easily. There's a lot of towns out there that do the same thing, that have the money and recycle their vehicles and offer them to other towns. And, and if we decide that because we think we're going to spend a hundred grand in three years not to do this, that's really a sad situation.
Any other comments or questions for question two, purchase of a command vehicle for the fire departments? Seeing none, we will now move to question three. Should the town authorize the expenditure of up to thirty-four thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a municipal vehicle to be used by the municipal and code enforcement staff?
The question I got was regarding insurance. The vehicle that essentially has been looked at was a 2025 Subaru Crosstrek. Eleven hundred and ninety-three dollars is the yearly premium.
How much was that?
One thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Did I say eleven ninety?
Yeah.
So I said?
Yep.
What did I say?
Eleven ninety-three.
Okay.
There had been some discussion.
I'm just curious, excuse me.
Oh, sure.
Eleven ninety-three for a Subaru. And how much for the command vehicle?
Eleven seventy-six.
No, the Chevy Tahoe was four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So half.
I just wanted to make sure I got that right. Okay, thank you.
There had been some discussion about possibly renting a vehicle. Did, was that looked into?
Releasing, double leasing?
Right, that's right.
I think that's, is that what you, the numbers were?
No. Want to answer this? The board has, yeah, this is a purchase. The board has gone back and forth, and the final consensus was to purchase it outright. So they weren't waiting to see if the next year would cover the lease payments, if the voters decided not to, not to approve them even in the middle of the lease.
It also says be used by the municipal, municipal staff and who determines, and the code enforcement officer?
The primary purpose of this vehicle is going to be for the code enforcement officer to do all of his inspections. Your municipal treasurer also goes to the bank, depending on the amount of cash, at least two or three times a week. Other staff, depending on policy, could be, if the office assistant drives to the Springville post office, where we have to take our certified because we're not supposed to take them acting, he's going down there. It's municipal staff for municipal purposes only.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask the same question that Lee brought up about the, the vehicle, the command vehicle. I assume that there's been a cost analysis done to see what kind of savings doing, doing that would be to the taxpayers.
Do you mean savings or, I believe Lee's question was about maintenance. So you're talking about savings or maintenance?
I'm talking about, about if we buy that car and whatever we spent on that car, or plan to spend on that car for a year, what, what would be the cost savings to the taxpayers by going on this route instead of just sticking with us, seventy cents a mile?
I would have the chief come up and answer that question.
I think you're talking.
I'm sorry.
He was saying the question that was asked during that.
The cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so the, you know, the money that is appropriated to purchase the car is going to be more than we pay on the mileage. The concern is, is the wear and tear on the staff's vehicles. You know, the staff is getting seventy cents a mile, barely covering the gas when they're going out and doing these inspections. And the code officer, I think, is behind you to, to add some input. We've calculated, you know, what we think gas is based on the mileage from the last three years, maintenance, you know, with the right new car purchase, you know, hopefully a lot of that's going to be included, you know, the regular oil changes and tire rotations. But it's not going to be a wash and it is going to be an expense to the town. But the idea is keeping staff that doesn't have to maintain, you know, use their own personal vehicles because we're not paying for tires and tie rods on some of these dirt roads, you know. Can we ask the code officer to come over? He may have a.
If I understand it, we currently have a budget, or at least in the prior year, we had a budget for mileage of seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
About eight thousand, yes.
About eight thousand dollars. So that's what we budgeted for mileage for these individuals. So the maintenance is certainly going to be significantly less than.
Oh, absolutely.
My understanding is, a few weeks ago, the town ministry has said that last year we spent around four thousand. We budgeted more, but what we actually spent was around four.
Okay, all right.
I just want to know if there were any savings to the.
I would, personally, I would imagine with the new vehicle, I'm sure there'll be substantial savings against either what was budgeted or even what was spent in the prior year. At some point, when the vehicle comes off warranty, there could be expenses, I'm sure, that might cause us to exceed them. That would, that would be true for any vehicle that's purchased here, not just the municipal vehicle, but any vehicle, whether it is the ambulance, whether it is the command vehicle or the town vehicle. There will always be unforeseen expenses. It simply can't be budgeted and planned over. Yeah.
And a lot of them include these maintenance.
I'm just saying, there's no way of knowing what, what it will be.
It may be a four-year payback, but after that, it'll be a C and S every year.
Yeah, right. So even the gas savings would be, you know, we're going to be getting at least ten more gallons per mile for, from what I'm driving. I obviously, we, I gave mileage, but like Jen said, I'm covering the gas and some of my wear and tear. A neighbor in town has realized how much they're spending on, on actual maintenance and has actually set aside a twenty-five-hundred-dollar maintenance allowance account for, for the code officer or any municipal vehicle to do on their own services because the mileage isn't covering, making up for the wear and tear that we do. And honestly, half of our roads are dirt roads and you guys drive on them, they're full of puddles. So my wear and tear on that vehicle exceeds what most people are, the, the, when they're hitting their seventy, it used to be sixty-seven cents a mile. So my wear and tear on a truck that I drive, and I guess, I get it, it's my truck, I, I chose to drive it, but it, it doesn't make up for it.
But you need that in the winters.
And I need that truck. And so the Subaru Crosstrek, I, I worked for the best all-around vehicle. Our librarian has one, she loves it, it works great in the snow, it's all-wheel-drive. The pounding on the vehicle won't be as severe because it's not so heavy. And the gas mileage, thirty-four miles to the gallon on, on highway in twenty-seven city. So the thirty-four thousand is, was just to cover everything as well as, I think it even helps out with the gas. That wasn't, that's not the price of the vehicle. I was quoted last year at twenty-seven thousand. So we're making sure that in that budget, we have enough for any kind of maintenance as well as gas.
You know, I think there can be a se, a perception that people that get mileage are somehow making out on the deal. And here we've got a situation with someone who puts a fair amount of mileage on his vehicle, and he wants out of that because he made his own determination and calculation that the cost of using his own vehicle and the wear and tear on that isn't being compensated by the mileage rate. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. So last year, I put, I put six thousand two hundred and fifteen miles on my truck, just driving for inspections and, and other things for Acton. That's a reimbursement of forty-two hundred dollars. I'm tired of the loan costs of twenty-five hundred dollars.
I got a question. Replacement value of your truck?
Let's not say.
So I, I, you know, you're here, what do you get, seventy cents a mile, right?
Yeah.
So we're going to drive up Winchell Lane, which is exactly a mile, a rough road that nobody wants to drive down, including myself. Okay, and you drive back, you make a dollar forty, driving down that rough road. And a truck that's probably going to cost resale right now, to buy that truck, you're going to be in the probably high sixties and the seventies, right? I'm asking, I can ask you a question.
So I've been, I've been driving that truck.
So, so like, my question is, my question was this to you. At, at, getting paid seventy dollars a mile, seventy cents a mile, sorry. Yeah, seventy dollars, we're all over that. Okay, do you think with the wear and tear that you're putting on your vehicle that it's worth, you know, the devaluation of your vehicle?
No, I don't think it is. But I also don't feel like I should have to go and buy my own, a personal vehicle just to drive it because I don't want to devalue my own vehicle, my, my everyday vehicle. Because that would be my only next.
More smaller towns are doing this because they're seeing code officers switching, shifting towns that cover that because it's such a large expense. You know, they're, they're seeing staff shift towns that have vehicles or something they can use.
And, and before the question even gets asked, we've already had discussion about this one. The municipal vehicle does not leave the grounds on, at night, doesn't leave it on weekends. It's parked here and stays here a hundred percent of the time when it's not being used for town purposes.
Apologies for breaking this before, but I think we got to go back to the other big part of this that I think people don't necessarily realize because you don't deal with it, is we sat right here December two, twenty twenty-three, when I asked for a brand-new one and the command vehicle, municipal vehicle. And MMA frowned upon the use of our personal vehicles for town business. So I think it's also in the best interest, liability-wise, that we move away from using personal vehicles.
I got a question for you, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
If you were driving your, your personal vehicle, no, I know all about the insurance thing. It was one of my other questions that was coming. Okay, if you, you're driving your personal vehicle onto a fire site, okay, and another, say, someone, you crashed into a tree because it was all ice, you slid into a tree, whose insurance does that affect?
That's my insurance.
That's what I thought. The same thing with him.
May municipal only pay. No, maybe, yeah, I was going to say, may municipal only pay the deductible, and I confirmed that today. So that seventy cents, I mean, I know you're not getting mileage now, but since we're on the municipal vehicle, that seventy cents that the treasurer, the code officer is getting, is not paying for just gas and maintenance and wear and tear. It's towards his insurance. If it gets in an accident, it's his insurance that covers it. May municipal pays the deductible.
On the insurance side for the municipal vehicles, we're seeing a multitude, not a lot, but however many people are going to be driving it and do whatever errands need to be done. Do all those people have to be listed on the insurance for them to drive it?
So may municipal has to approve our policy, and what they've indicated is the, as long as we have a clean driver's record and they're active employees, that they'll be covered.
So that, that everybody's name has to be on it?
They don't have to be, no. And not all of our staff will use it. There'll be some staff, some staff that will never use it.
Any other questions relating to question three, the purchase of municipal, municipal vehicle?
So we own half of a police car, and I know you guys have talked about that. How is that backed into maybe using that vehicle?
So unfortunately, the timing has been off on this. Chapley approached us first. At the time that the board had already drafted most of these warrant articles and we were moving forward with a vote. This is something we've been talking about for several months. Once the vote on the sheriff's car just passed and approved the contract, Sheriff, Chapley reached out to us immediately, and they've asked us to purchase it. If you watch, they've asked to purchase Acton Sheriff. If you watch last week's meeting, the board has asked for some things, so they're in negotiations with getting the value on it. I think that David made a good point last week that if he could go back, you know, we would have tried to buy the car from Acton, I mean, from Chapley.
Well, you, you still can, right? Can you put a bid? Can you guys go into a bidding war?
Yes.
Well, we're like, we're, we're bidding against each other. We're not paying the sheriff.
No, I get it. You could, you both want a car, you would have to, it would go to the highest bidder.
I think you're, I think you're correct.
If this car doesn't pass, you have the option of purchasing.
What do you mean pass?
The town votes down.
We, we still can't buy the car. The reason why we're going through all this is because the MMA told us we cannot buy another vehicle without going to town boat.
So we still have to bring it back.
Either way, you're still in the same boat. But we have written the article to spend up to, I believe, up to. And for some reason, if we decided to do that, this would allow us to spend up to thirty-four thousand.
Oh, so it would have to get.
If this, if this fails, we cannot buy another vehicle unless we go back to the town for information.
So is the police car an option? Are you going to possibly go to bid against Chapley for the police car?
Right now, this is the path that we're, we're moving forward with.
I'll speak for myself. I don't think as a board we've talked about that. I think there may be some interest in doing that, but we have not discussed it.
We have to have options here because we get into a, a back and forth of them, who's going to spend whatever. We might get to a point where we don't want to spend as much as they want to give, and then we have to have, you know. This, this got sprung on us last week. But, you know, we haven't had enough time to have a conversation about it, but we can't just put the hold of this one. And I think this is, myself, myself, I would go this route for some reason is you got a vehicle there that's got a lot of miles on it. There's no warranty with this car, with that car, none. So this has got a full warranty, in four years, we can trade it in, buy another one, and have another four-year warranty, so we have no maintenance.
And I wonder what that other car's going to.
Basically, in four years, it'll pay for itself at eight thousand dollars a year mileage, so, yeah.
I think the point of this act, or this, is that we will have the option to either buy a vehicle, a new vehicle, or if we wanted to consider negotiating with Chapley to, to acquire the vehicle for our own purposes, that's still an option open to us. We have not decided either, on either avenue.
Okay, thank you.
This question would have to pass the vote.
Right, to buy anything.
Are you answering a question or?
I'm kind of going on the warranty on the, you know, so one of the vehicles that I had proposed, it carries a five-year, sixteen-thousand-mile warranty. So you see, they give you five years of sixty, which is sixty, and five years will come before that. And then there's vehicles that are even higher than that, if you're buying a brand-new, so.
Just a couple of things. The warranties don't cover brakes, don't cover tires, things like that. So that would be an added expense to the town. And, and I went through, and for fiscal year, last year's fiscal year, our total mileage that we paid out was four thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Thirty-eight ninety-nine of that was to the code officer and three hundred and seventy-three was for the treasurer. So it wasn't eight, it's not eight thousand dollars a year.
We said that's what was budgeted, you know, what was spent.
So, so, so one of us had seven thousand in eight years.
So someone of us had $7,000 in eight years.
Clearly stayed in use of budget.
She had already clarified that we spent a little over $4,000. And if we're buying tires and brakes in four years for a car, there's a problem. There's a huge problem.
Anyone else have anything for question three, purchase of municipal vehicle? Seeing none, we are now gonna move on to question four. Shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $65,938 from the unassigned balance fund to fulfill the 2025, 2026 winter snowplowing contracts with District One, North Snow Pond being $21,389, District Two, South Snow Pond being $44,549,000?
You're supposed to say pounds. There's no thousand on the other.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Either way, I appreciate that. So any questions, comments, anything, a burning question for the snowplowing contracts? We're going once.
I beat you. Sorry, Joyce, but actually. I would just like to say this. Not only question four, but three, two, and one. If we read these carefully, there is not one of these questions that says to raise and appropriate. This all says from the unassigned fund balance. And the fact that we can do that means you're looking at a lot of things, pulling a lot of money, and using it very wisely. And I think people should know that. There's not one, unless I'm not reading it right, not one thing that says raise and appropriate. When we raise and appropriate, what do we do?
Taxes.
Taxes, correct? There's not one of these that says we're gonna raise taxes.
And Joyce did answer that, right?
Sorry.
So to comment on your, we planned on raise and appropriate some of these, but we can't because of the August, when we set the tax rate.
Yeah.
So that's why we're having to do that. Some of these, people gotta understand, some of these are gonna be
Next year.
Next year in the budget, and it will affect the tax rate.
They'll be in the budget, but next year, we'll see what our money is next year. And if we make wise decisions again. You know, I think the glass is half-full. Glass is half-full. Let's enjoy the glass half-full. We don't have to raise taxes right now on any of these. And I think that's a good job on that. I think you did a good job on that.
May I respond? As far as I'm concerned, whether it's fund balance
Right.
or taxes, to me, it doesn't matter. It's all citizens' money. It all makes its way into the tax base one way or the other.
Right.
If you have excess reserves, you use them to reduce the tax rate. So to me, it doesn't really matter. It's town funds and.
We got them somehow.
No, but if we spend them this way, they're not gonna be available for tax relief. So to say it doesn't affect taxes, I would disagree.
Really?
Yeah. Over the long run, I would disagree.
Over the long run. Because if I add this term, we're at about what? 800,000?
Seven hundred, 77,938.
Oh, thank you.
So if you take that number of almost $800,000.
Almost $800,000.
You take it out of our designated fund.
Right.
And then when next year, when we're going through our tax bill, we try to, we wanna offset. We don't have that $800,000 offset.
That's my point.
That's your point. That's very good. Although we had $800,000 this year.
My point is that it's all fungible money. I'm sorry, I shouldn't use that term. It's all town money. And eventually, it all makes its way into the tax base.
I'm not saying it isn't, but I'm saying it when it's being used.
Okay.
Your husband needing the money properly.
I agree with you. I agree with you. The ambulance, the stuff that we're purchasing.
The things that we're purchasing is being done in a, the old-fashioned word is your husband needing the money properly. You're using it for what we need. We're not putting a water tap out front or something like that.
Don't get any ideas.
So any other comments or questions specific to question four, the snowplowing contracts? Keeping it to the contracts, please.
Well, I guess it's not specific to this, but the conversation has been raised as to all those is the unassigned fund balance. As a citizen of the town of Acton, I guess my question is, with all the investments that were done that were approved a couple of years ago, I believe, what is the amount of money that have been earned on those investments?
About a quarter of a million dollars a year.
Quarter of a million?
Yes.
Okay. So that's about half a million dollars for the last two years.
Roughly. You know, I think we realized two and a quarter the first year, 225,000, and maybe 200,000 in the second, so I guess it's 425,000. And we're gonna earn something this year. So someplace around half a million dollars.
So basically, the annuals would basically cover the cost, if you wanna look at it from that perspective.
The cost of.
Can you be honest?
All this, all these deals.
I mean, if you, if we made, say, $425,000, I mean, what Tom has done by doing what he's done is he's bought us new ambulants for free.
So are there any other questions specific to the snowplowing contracts? Getting back on track to question four. Any questions specific to the snowplowing contracts? Did you have any?
No, sir.
Seeing done, I guess that is the end of our public meeting. We'll close it out at 6:59 PM. So next on our agenda, we have our warrant recommendations.
Okay. So Article Two, shall the town authorize expenditure of up to $656 from the unassigned fund balance to purchase new ambulance?
So how would we work?
Someone's gonna make a motion to approve it, approve it.
Okay, so I.
All in favor?
All in favor? All opposed? I move to set, something like this.
So shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $22,000 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a manned vehicle for the fire department?
Make a motion to approve question two, that's right.
Second. All in favor? All opposed?
Right, that was actually Article Three. It's a two. He made a motion for Article Two, and that was technically three. On the warrant. You got, the warrant is different than the order. You had two documents.
Can I have a topic of the warrant? I don't.
I only have one order. I don't have a warrant.
What did I do?
Back to the. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Okay.
All right, Article Four. Shall the town authorize the expenditure of up to $34,000 for the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a municipal vehicle to be used by municipal and code enforcement staff?
So we, so we did.
On Article Four.
Right.
So we're skipping?
No, you did two, four to one. Three, you did four to one, so now we're on four.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Four as written. Second.
All in favor? Any extensions or any?
Okay, Article Five. Shall the town vote to authorize up to $65,938 from the unassigned fund balance to fulfill the 25, 26 winter snowplowing contracts as broken down below?
I make a motion to approve Article Five as written.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one question.
So you're not signing it tonight. The word's gonna get added.
Okay.
They were popping Jason from the board. And then, down the way ahead.
So any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we are going into, do we need to sign? No, I'm signing. Okay, we're going to appointments.
Tom has to report tonight.
I'll make a motion to appoint Coke. Coke Den Camp to the Mary Grant Committee for a term ending 6/30/2026.
Second. All in favor? Any extensions?
Do you want to do the next one?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jason Sevigny as a harbor master for a term ending June 30, 2026.
Second. All in favor?
Did you get a half of that?
Second. And with that, we will move on to the community resilience letter.
So Phil's gonna join us to talk about the community resilience letter that he presented. Phil?
I couldn't tell if you were looking at it because of the clarity of the line system.
Remember you asked me to put this on here tonight?
I did.
Okay. Tell them a little bit about it. What's going on?
York County EMA called me yesterday afternoon. There's a program that John is working on, a different grant, different category through the same state program. And asked me what they'll do as an assessment on efficiency within the town. Some of it's related to climate issues, but it's about efficiencies. Like what John's knowing is, he has a $68,000 grant approved. It could be things for like replacing, in his case, appliances that are old, the air conditioners. In other words, it's about efficiency. This is basically, the county is the, they run this through the state. They offered it to us because we were to participate. They asked me directly, and of course, I'm gonna say yes to anything that's offered like that. It's not like we're paying for anything. And they'll do an assessment for us at their cost, and everything's done with them. All you have to do, they've been sent predetermined letter, which Jennifer, put letter in on, thank you. And all we have to do is sign it by Friday so they can submit it to the state. And when the time comes, of course, I'll brief you exactly what it means. But basically, it's, I would be having, I and you folks, whoever wanted to, could be involved in meetings with their assessments they do of our town. So having never done this, I don't know everything they're gonna look at. I did send the program part as well.
Yeah, so this is a letter addressed to the partnership program manager. It doesn't tie the town to anything. It just indicates the town is pleased to provide a letter of support for the emergency management application. Talks about the data gathering, information sharing, the community outreach, assessment participation. And that we understand that they're trying to basically do four things. Work with climate risks, make recommendations for resilience, identify potential collaboration opportunities, and make for a stronger community. So it's just a letter of support.
I think we did the same as I did with John. So I see now, I first just an issue with her because of very outcomeful, John's had worked on that for a while.
Part of these days.
So do we need to move to sign the letter as presented?
Do we need a motion?
Yes. So they have a motion?
He already made it.
Okay. All in favor?
Free money is good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Penning or three?
Yeah, so this, last week, you guys asked for changes to be made to it. I know that in one of the emails that we responded to the finance committee, we did tell them if any questions or concerns that we'd be discussing it tonight, we did not have a chance to get completely updated, we designed tonight. But I think it was Tom that asked me to start keeping pen margins on the agenda. We could see him, so I don't know if you wanna get input or that's where it is.
We didn't have a chance to, just to get it finalized.
Yeah, it's not finalized. It's just the discussion we had last week.
I guess, do we wanna ask if there's any more finance members who have questions based off of the discussion last week, or do we wanna wait until we have a more finalized copy? More finalized? Okay.
Yeah.
I think that sounds good. And with that, we will move into public comments. Is there any public comments?
Took a lot of miles to find it.
Ray Lopez. As in previous times when I was at Warren Finance, sometimes we were asked to explain the reasons as to why we would not support something. I see on question one and question two is a four-to-one vote. And I'm just wondering as to why the opposing from Tom.
Well, if you watch the tape, you'll see that I've spoken a number of times about this. I can certainly see the merits of it. I'm just not convinced of its necessity, quite frankly. And that's a judgment. I'm not sure I could spell out all the reasons why I feel that way, but that's my feeling.
I think there's been plenty of discussion where.
Go back on one of the tapes. Ray and you, you'll hear my comments.
All right. Thank you.
Something might be helpful. As we know, and it's on our website about postal issues, everybody's gonna have it on here, including myself and my wife, and Ray and everyone else probably. I have firsthand knowledge. I can't say from who. But I know on the website, it said, I guess, I think it was Susan Collins to file a complaint online. Well, I would say, don't waste your time. They wind up at the Acton post office on a laptop that nobody's looking at. But what, what I was told that will make a difference is the postmaster for Acton is actually in Springville, as you probably know. Jim Tesoro, they changed those folks a lot there. And I was told that if you call him and enough people let him know about the issues that are going on here, don't bother going on the USPS website, because it's going really nowhere. So I have the number 324-6360. His name is Jim Tesoro. And that's the person to let know about the issues that are happening. We've had packages thrown in a ditch on a rainy day because they didn't wanna come down the driveway, that kind of stuff, so.
I'm gonna forward you the email from Senator Collins' office. And you can reply directly on what you're, you know, how, what happened when you sent that just so they can stop giving that advice to town if it's not working, so.
Yeah.
You could just send them a little email on your experiences. That would be great.
Yeah.
Let me just say that I've dealt with the Springville
What's that?
postmaster before, and I found him to be a very reasonable individual who made a serious attempt to follow up and resolve the issue.
That's because it's something.
I'll echo what you had said. What's that?
It's a different, yeah, now. They just changed him again.
Yeah, they changed him.
I thought that, I was checking the name. I thought it was similar.
Jim Tesoro is their current, the change is.
I'll take back what I said. I'll reserve judgment until my next time to talk about it.
I understand.
Yeah.
And yeah, it doesn't matter who it is. That's what's gonna matter.
Any other public comment?
Hi. So on the community resilience grant, I want to thank John for all the hard work he did.
Worked on, yeah.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm sure the whole town, if they understand how much work you put in, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You worked really hard. Who else did you have come?
I'm not here.
Any other public comment? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:11.
All in favor?